Yeah, yeah, I'll throw you.
Those are both charging and working.
Corky. I'm not Corky, it's Corky. Uh, he got you. He don't give a bit of water. Okay, it's, uh, 5:30. What a great crowd. Temperature in here is perfect. Uh, I'm Max Bacon, I'm the mayor of Smyrna. Uh, I want to thank everyone for being here. This is our spring edition of the Mayor's Award for Education. And I have to ask Christie, when did this start? About 2006, so this is the 14th year that we've, uh, done this. And, uh, it's just part of what our relationship that we have with all of our schools. Um, I think that's important for us to recognize, uh, the students and the volunteers and the teachers, uh, for their outstanding, uh, work during that year. Uh, we have it twice a year and, um, we look forward to it every year. Chris Ragsdale is not here tonight, the superintendent. He, uh, sent me a text today and I said I'd say something nice about him. Everybody used to hover back there around him and they just, he couldn't get out and, uh, but he had, uh, this is the first one that he's missed. So, uh, Chris does a great job and I'll leave it at that. He's got, uh, he's a big boy that can play piano like nobody's business, so. Um, we've got some council members here. I want to recognize, and those that are not here, I won't recognize. Derek Norton, uh, is the guy in the blue jacket and the blue shirt. These guys dress up, they, they called each other tonight. And they look like the Doodah Boys and, uh... He represents Ward One. He's a heartbeat away from being the mayor. Uh, it's for me. Corky Welch represents Ward, uh, Four. He's got a blue sport coat on and a light blue shirt. Tim Ghul behind me represents Ward Six. He's our newest council member. He also has a blue sport coat on and a light blue shirt. That's the silliest thing I've seen in a long time. Um, I want to thank, uh, McIntyre Bakery, Zaxby's, Jimmy Nick's, for their donation that they give us every single time that we have this. Um, Tammy Sattler Jones is our city administrator. She has a black. Scott Andrews is our assistant city administrator. He's got on a light blue shirt. Chief Stan, Stan Hook, my goodness. The mind's a terrible thing to lose. Uh, David Lee, how long have you been chief?
Six years.
Six years and I call him Stan Hook, who was the previous. But what's he gonna do to me? So... Ah, he's lost his mind. Christie Ullman is my, is the administrative assistant to the man council. She's the, she's the brain. She's the one that gets all this together and gets me to sign all the certificates and, uh... You know, one thing that's so great about Smyrna is we have such a great diverse community. And, um, we're sort of the melting pot of the, of the world. And if there's one thing I tell folks is, uh, a plus for Smyrna is because we're so diverse. But when I start signing my name, uh, the first two or three were very easy. Uh, and she said, "Oh, you wait till you get about halfway through." Uh, thank goodness the principals are gonna get up and tell who these individuals are, but they're just some unique names. I couldn't, I have a hard time pronouncing Brown and Smith, so. Uh, we're gonna start tonight with Whitfield Academy because they always go last. They're probably not here yet. So, I know that, um... You, you can come on down. Uh, I know that everybody probably got a memo from Christie about cutting back your time, uh... So, we'll see how that works. I don't have a hook or don't have a, something to zap you with. We're going with Whitfield Academy first. Hold on, we're mad here. I saw you the other day, didn't I?
You did?
You looked the same. Uh, Kevin Bratcher?
I'm filling in for Kevin.
Oh, the fill-in. Yeah, the switcheroo. So come here and let me see some ID. We're glad you're here. Thank you. Whitfield Academy.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and start off. Uh, my name's Danny Ryan, athletic director at Whitfield. Uh, I'd like to first honor Madison Sutherland. Come on up, please. Madison is one of the most joyful young women, uh, Whitfield has met. She pours her heart into everything she does. She's able to bring joy to any situation. She also possesses an impressive amount of personal drive and self-motivation, has an innate ability to create buy-in wherever she goes. People gravitate towards her because she encourages them to be the best version of themselves. She's optimistic, compassionate, self-confident, independent and goal-oriented. Outside of Whitfield, Madison volunteers with the special needs department at her church. She has a great passion for getting to know each child on an individual basis and helping them do their best. At Whitfield, she's a member of the National Honor Society, National Spanish Honor Society, and she also earned the Senior Achievement Award for biggest jump in GPA from ninth through 12th grade. And she serves as the manager of the girls' basketball and softball teams and volunteers as a peer tutor. Last year she served as the assistant editor of the school yearbook and this year she's serving as the editor. She's earning the Senior Achievement Award for biggest jump, like I said, and she is the yearbook editor. They put that in there twice. Madison Sutherland. And next we'll honor Robin Feather. She's our volunteer award winner. Robin's been a Whitfield family since 2016. She has three students at the school and kindergarten second and fourth. She served as a critical role this year in leading a day-long arts and science day with over 75 volunteers. She's served as a grade-level rep and has led the charge with grandparents' day. She not only gives a lot to the schools as a volunteer, but she always does it with a smile. Her work ethic and joyful spirit are celebrated with this award. Robin Feather. And Sean Watson wins our teacher, uh, award this year. I don't think, oh, there he is. So Sean's been on staff with us for two years as a teaching assistant. He's served as a fifth and sixth grade football coach. He's a beloved member of the Cub Club after school, worked summer camp. He's the first to help out anywhere anything is needed from putting together shelves. Um, when the principal was new to driving the van and shuttling folks around in the mornings to arriving early to put out signs for carpool. Sean's kindness, consideration and cooperative spirit to the Whitfield community make him a natural recipient for this award. Sean Watson.
Madison, come back up here. Madison's a little nervous. Get a picture of y'all together and then y'all can be dismissed. All right, one picture.
That ain't the first time.
I said, I said, that's all I'm doing. Thank y'all, congratulations. One, one of the things that I get to do is what I want to do. Uh, I'm gonna let my favorite high school principal, Dr. Jean Walker, go next. I don't know why I'm doing this, but, um, I, I do want to say this and I always say it, but I didn't say it tonight. The, the group that we're recognizing tonight is simply just the best of the best. Those folks that do so much for our school system and make our community what it's all about. So, congratulations, Dr. Jean Walker. How's it going?
Thank you, Mayor Bacon. It is always a pleasure to be here to recognize some outstanding members of the Campbell High School community. Appreciate the constant support from all of the city government and really enjoy our relationship and the great things we see happen in, in Smyrna. Uh, today I am here to recognize, I'm gonna kind of go in a different order. First, I'd like to call our school volunteer, Jennifer Mallon, to the front. Ms. Mallon, come on down. So, Ms. Mallon is a Campbell High School parent of two sons, um, John and Dylan. Uh, they, she is also a key player in our Campbell High School tennis program where, uh, the girls finished first in the region, won the region, and the boys finished second in the region but went on to make it to the second round of the state tournaments. And probably her biggest, uh, recognition this year was she was the brainchild behind Dancing With The Stars of Smyrna. And, um, when I say it was a year-long project, it was a year-long project. She probably spent as much time up at Campbell and the various venues as any of our employees do. Uh, but she was, if you saw the marketing that went on, she worked with a team of three, or there were three of them that kept that going. And really, we were so surprised to sell out, uh, the venue, the civic center for the event. Uh, people were begging for tickets by the Saturday of the event. It was a remarkable e- experience. If you were able to be there, you know what I'm talking about. But it was just such a fun night to see so many people from around the community come out to support the high school. And we now have, uh, opened a renovated, larger, brand-new equipment, uh, 3,000-square-foot weight room with, uh, just state-of-the-art equipment. And we're really excited Dancing With The Stars helped make that happen. So thank you, Ms. Mallon, we appreciate all you've done. We'd also like to recognize staff member Tammy Johnson. Is Ms. Johnson here tonight? I think we must have gotten some wires crossed because I asked her if she was good for tonight. So, if you, uh, live in the Smyrna area, work with Campbell High School, you probably met Ms. Johnson. She is our community liaison and wears many a hat at Campbell, but probably her biggest role is interacting with the community, with many of the people here at the city government as well as business members across, uh, Smyrna. She is, uh, sets up and coordinates our business partner meetings that we have at Campbell High School where we'll have 40 to 50 business partners from around the community and to talk about ways to partner with our school. And just any volunteers, anything that requires somebody from the outside or parent volunteers, Ms. Johnson is generally involved with a smile on her face and is one of the hardest workers I ever, I've ever met. She also works side-by-side with Ms. Mallon on the Dancing With The Stars program, which will go down in history as probably our most successful fundraising effort, but only to be topped by the next one. So, um, when we see Ms. Johnson, we will be sure and congratulate her. The student I'm gonna recognize tonight is Kiran Guransakor. I've probably massacred that last name even though I practice it. Um, Kiran is a Campbell High School senior. She has a 4.74 GPA. She is number 11 in the senior class of 650 students. But I have a feeling that ranking is probably gonna go up just based on the grades. I looked at her grades today and her lowest grade of her eight subjects is a 95. Um, and she didn't have anything lower than a 91 in her whole high school career. So that tells you a little bit about Kiran. She is president of the Water Project, which has been a longstanding Campbell organization that raises money to build wells for underdeveloped areas in Africa. Uh, she's treasurer of the Interact Club, a member of the Chick-fil-A Leadership Academy, which held the special needs prom just a couple of weeks ago. She started the annual Angel Tree fundraiser to buy Christmas presents for underprivileged kids. She's co-founder of Path To Shine with her sister, Kurtie. And, um, they do, they conduct tutoring and mentoring in, for elementary school kids this year, working with Norton Park, I believe it was. And, uh, oh, the messages I got from the staff at Norton Park about what this program meant to their students was really, really touching. Um, Kiran will attend Georgia Tech this next year. And, um, I'm gonna surprise her a little bit because I just got this certificate in the mail today. She was named a National Merit Scholarship win, uh, winner. So she has earned another $2,500 to pay for Georgia Tech tuition. So thank you, Kiran. Wonderful young lady.
Congratulations, thanks so much. Thanks for everything that you do. It's awesome.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, picture. Hey, I remember, do you remember my name?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we're gonna do, have we got?
Tim's getting there. Tim, where you, oh, Tim's gonna take the picture.
Y'all come over here so that this might be...
Oh, okay.
Plenty of time, plenty of time. Campbell Middle School. They got this right here. Dr. Camilla Havish. I can't see. And the reason why, hey, how you doing? The reason why that Tim Ghul, he's the chairman of the education committee and he's been really involved in Campbell High School and he, uh, has done so much in such a short period of time that, uh, it's taken a load off me. Come on, come on, come on, don't be afraid. Campbell Middle School, sorry I couldn't get you earlier.
Okay, hi, I'm Camille Havis, proud principal of Campbell Middle School. And the first person I want to recognize is Ms. Maggie Shannon. Come on up. Brevity, watch, brevity. She is an awesome mother, advocate and volunteer at Campbell Middle School. She has single-handedly gone out to solicit businesses in Smyrna and raised close to $7,000 for the Campbell Middle School Foundation, which donates to teacher grants. In addition, she is an active parent at all meetings, my website buddy, my beautification guru and all-around active community member. And we're so happy to have you with us, thank you. The next person I want to recognize is Mr. Robert Hay. He is, come on down, Robert. He is a sixth grader at Campbell Middle School. He's an awesome brother and a terrific son. I know his father personally. He is a straight A student who has been recognized on the principal's honor roll for each quarter and was awarded our Student of the Month for April. But his crowning, crown and glory is CTAE Cobb County Middle School Student of the Year. So... Cobb County, all the middle schools, congratulations, Robert. And the final person I want to recognize is Mr. Richard Selby. Come on up. This is the band, right here, this man right here. He is, he is our favorite old-school teacher, all-around nice guy. He's been at Campbell Middle School for 30 years. He is retiring. I'm so sorry. He is, he is retiring. Uh, when I met him back in July and he told me he was retiring, I was like, "What are you doing? You can't leave me." And he, he said, "This has always been the plan for, for, like you were on a countdown when I first met you." But, um, he will be working his last Disney trip this week and he's excited about that. And he, 14 years of Disney, God bless you. And with the eighth graders, there's no way. And, um, we're gonna miss him and thank you so much for all you've done and welcoming me.
Congratulations. I'm only gonna do this one time because I gave him an honest score on his Dancing With The Stars. I was a judge, which is stupid for me to be a judge because you make one person happy and everybody else is mad at you. Griffin Middle School, Paul Gillahan. Uh, and we could, the bad thing about the Dancing With Stars, I don't think I would say, is we were in the back, the judges saw, all we could see was the back of them. And, um, I gave him, what did I give you? What score did I give you?
A seven, not that I forgot.
Listen, my, my daughter, who's the principal of Green Acres, hit me with his, uh, his face. I didn't know that they were all these people right there wanting Paul to win, but if I could've seen you from the front, you might've done better. I might've given you an eight, but, uh... Congratulations, anyway.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I am Paul Gillahan, the proud principal of Griffin Middle School, and I am here to honor three outstanding people. And first, we're gonna go with our parent volunteer, Stacy Dax. Stacy, will come on up. If you ever come to Griffin Middle School, usually, no matter what time, early morning, middle of the day, late in the afternoon, at night, weekends, you will find Stacy there. Stacy handles our, uh, school store and is one of her major things, but she also helps out a lot in the learning commons. And Ms. Quintana was elated when I told her who it was gonna be and wanted to come tonight, but she couldn't come tonight. Stacy is a proud parent of Griffin Middle School and of Campbell High School. And, uh, we, I don't know what I would've done my four and a half years if Stacy hadn't have been there. So, uh, I'm so proud to have Stacy as our parent volunteer. And I'm gonna go to our teacher, uh, Ms. Quin, Laquincia Brown. Laquincia, come on up. Quincy epitomizes what a teacher should be every day. Uh, she cares for her students. She goes to their sporting events. She goes wherever they are, Quincy's gonna be there. Uh, and in doing that, she has built strong relationships with her sixth-grade science students. And they come to her and they, they, this is their mother at school, right here, Ms. Quincy Brown. She's involved with our ladies of excellence, sponsoring, uh, a group of young ladies that is doing tremendous things at our school and outside our school. And she just jumps right in. I tell her all the time that she needs to believe more in herself because she is phenomenal. And when she does start believing in her abilities, watch out, Smyrna, because Griffin's gonna be on the chart. Laquincia Brown, sixth-grade teacher. And I'm gonna tag team on this one. Uh, our eighth-grade administrator, Ms. Seibert, is gonna come up. And our student, every morning, uh, the both of us are in the eighth-grade hallway greeting students as they come in. And there's this one student that comes in and, yes, I probably have given him a hard time the last three years as he's been there. Uh, just a little bit, just a little bit. But Leonard Gutuma is our, uh, student, uh, for our recognition. Come on up and Kathy's gonna tell you more about it.
So, we chose Leonard because he is a citizen. If we need anything, he's the first one to say, "How can I help you?" To not only his peers, but then to the sixth graders. He's been a mentor to the sixth grade, to the seventh grade, and also to our low-incidence, um, kiddos. He's always pushing their wheelchairs out, is always a gentleman, a scholar and a leader. And we couldn't be prouder of his efforts in our building every day.
Leonard, are, Leonard, are you uncomfortable? Good, you're a good man, I can tell already.
He is a good man. You know, this is my last one.
Yes.
New principal of Griffin Middle School, Ms. Laurie Hill is in the back. This is my last one and start, goes back to 2007 when I got it as a teacher at Campbell High School.
He's, uh, he's done a great job at Griffin and, uh, we're gonna miss him and, uh... Where, where you going to school at, do you know? Wheeler High School. Oh, we'll be kicking you so bad. You gonna be crying. That ain't the way it works. All right, let's see, where am I at? Argyle Elementary, Georgette Clinton, principal. I bet she would've thought she would've been out of here by now, but, uh, sometimes it just happens, so... We're pretty much behind schedule, but it's okay. How you doing? Good, good to see you.
Thank you so much and, um, I am the proud principal at Argyle Elementary School and I hope that you will help me welcome and congratulate our student honoree tonight, VNA Trejo Rivera, if you'll come up and join me. Not only is she beautiful, but she exempli, exemplifies academic and academic excellence and positive character traits. She's a model student with great attendance, attitude and academic drive. In the classroom, she is cooperative, a leader among her peers and encourages others to achieve at high levels. I am proud to honor her tonight and so proud of all of her achievements. She will be heading off to middle school, so we'll be sad to see her go, but we are so very proud of all that she's accomplished in her elementary school years. We would also like to honor Sean Walker. Also beautiful as well. Ms. Walker is a paraprofessional in title, but she is a true teacher and caregiver at heart. She dedicates her days to her students. You may see her pushing a little one in a wheelchair, carrying them from one place to the next, all while keeping them close to her heart. She encourages them to face their challenges and to overcome them. She is thoughtful and energetic. Every time you see her, she has a smile and she's working hard to keep, um, excitement going on in her classroom or if she's traveling with the students during specials. She works tires tirelessly, so you may even see her after school for all of our events that we have for our students. And, um, she will be laughing with them, dancing with them. Um, and she supports our school and teachers and lifts up the room with her smile and great attitude. She's a true team player and we are so blessed daily by her presence. Congratulations and thank you.
Belmont Hills Elementary, Ashley Campoli. Did I say that right? Principal. Hey, guys, we got some imposters here tonight. How you, how you doing? Good to see you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Haroldine Swerengen, the assistant principal at Belmont Hills, and I bring you greetings on behalf of Dr. Ashley Campoli. She couldn't be with us this evening. The first group of people I'd like to welcome are our volunteers from Smyrna First United Methodist Church. So would you guys come up quickly, all of our volunteers from Smyrna First United Methodist Church? Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you. The members of Smyrna First United Methodist Church have been partners with Belmont Hills for many, many years. Tonight, we are recognizing Alan, Alan Nicely, Alan Potter, Sue and Rick Plunkett and Valerie Luke, along with the entire Smyrna First United Methodist congregation. The vol, they volunteer at Belmont Hills by tutoring and reading to our students weekly. They provide staff meals for appreciation. They revitalize our lawn and our garden area throughout the year and they are host, they host every year our annual leadership retreat, which is coming up Fridays, looking forward to that. We appreciate the dedication and outreach from Smyrna First United Methodist Church and we hope that this relationship continues for many, many years to come. Thank you. Next, would you help me welcome Mrs. Elaine Echols. She's our bookkeeper. Elaine, would you come on up? Elaine is an integral member of the Belmont Hills office staff. Some may say that she's a bookkeeper and I've worked at a lot of schools and Elaine really, really does more than most bookkeepers do. Uh, you can see her in the hallways, uh, she shops for us every day. Almost every single day Elaine has to go... Almost every single day, Elaine has to go out and do something for us, and she does it with a smile. Elaine has been at Belmont Hills for eight years. Anything that the staff and students need, Elaine is there to get it to us quickly. You can see her walking in the hallways, organizing school supplies, and she just does a great job, and she does it with a smile. But also Elaine kinda keeps us straight, you know, she kinda tells us what to do. Yeah, she really, really does. She was fussing at us today about a Coca-Cola bottle. We found the Coca-Cola bottle in the trash can, okay? But we do that for Elaine. She is really the epitome of one team, one goal. So, let's give another round of applause to Elaine Echols. And last but not least, our student Andre Waynebo. Andre, would you come up? Come sit right here, Andre. Andre is a true example of the Belmont Hills spirit. He's hardworking, he's diligent, he's kind, and he's very, very involved at our school. He's an A/B honor roll student. Andre has shown mastery of fifth grade standards and goes above and beyond in all of his subject areas. Andre has participated in nearly every after-school club during his years at Belmont Hills. He currently sings in our chorus and is always prepared for those performances. He leads our school in the broadcast club as well as the math team. Andre is extremely encouraging and welcoming to all. He values fairness and treats everyone as a valued member of his class and the school environment. Andre is a gift to our school and our community. Andre was also this year a runner-up in our school spelling bee. I would also like to salute Andre's parents tonight for doing such an outstanding job with him. Thank you.
Five, four, three. Thank y'all. Covenant Christian School, Dr. Robert Barber is head schoolmaster.
Well, good evening, and I bring you greetings from Covenant Christian School and say thank you, mayor and council, and fellow citizens in Smyrna for, again, encouraging families to help shape the future by investing in kids today. We have three nominees we'd like to present to you. First, I wanna ask and see if Gabrielle Daniel made it this evening. Gabrielle, are you here? We have, here she comes. We have a recital rehearsal going on tonight, I wasn't sure. Gabrielle, come on up here, honey. Turn right around here. Gabrielle is a current fifth grade student that has been with us since K-5, and has been a great example of the kind of academically engaged and spiritually mature student that we value and enjoy every day at Covenant Christian School. Her teachers identify her as hardworking, persistent, and creative. Her peers tell me she's artistic, encouraging, and loyal. She is currently a straight-A student who serves as a leader in our relatively new school safety patrol program and participates in so many things at school and in the community as well. We're proud to have you, Gabrielle, and congratulations. I'd like our volunteer, Mrs. Betty Booker, to make her way up. Welcome, Ms. Booker. Around here, and look at these wonderful people. There you go. Mrs. Booker is the grandmother of a third grade student, Simon Anderson, in our school. And I think when Simon enrolled, I think Grandma enrolled. What a beautiful picture. For the last two years, she's been at our school two to three and sometimes more hours daily. Her work is not public or attention-getting, but I'm told she would be greatly missed if she was absent. Mrs. Booker volunteers her time as a teacher's aide, preparing, distributing, and grading papers. She fills in as a helper in K-4 and other classrooms. She knows the students, and they know and love her. We thank Mrs. Booker daily for being a visible reflection of Christ-like servant leadership and loving care to our students. Thank you, Mrs. Booker. Representing our faculty and staff this evening is Mrs. Jane Hamilton. Beyond her obvious love of teaching and her passion for helping children learn, Mrs. Hamilton has an obvious heart and gift for developing strong relationships with her students. She is described by colleagues and parents as patient, caring, and kind. And I say again, colleagues and parents. It's a gift, the way you interact with and support parents in this work too. She's a consummate professional with a keen awareness and knowledge of her learners' unique strengths and weaknesses. She has training and experience in working with special needs students. She was a North Carolina Teacher of the Year in 2015, which has also awarded a merit bonus from the state of North Carolina for one of the highest end-of-grade scores for third grade in the state in 2016. She brought her skill and dedication to teaching to us here at Covenant Christian School last year, where she served in kindergarten and was very flexible to graduate the first grade. Very good. I've been trying to graduate for a long time. And then she has blessed our school family by sharing her experiences with colleagues, supporting our parents, and helping their children grow as learners. And she joyfully engages our students in learning each and every day. I like to, the kind of teacher that if you wanna make a point of demonstrating what real engaging learning is all about, you can point to someone, and I like to point to Mrs. Hamilton. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Green Acres Elementary, Ashley Mines is the principal. I just wanna mention that in every packet, there's a something from Zaxby's and Jimmy Nix, I think it's about a $50 coupon for each, I think it's $5 off. Ashley Mines.
Good evening, everyone. I am the principal at Green Acres Elementary School, and I am so honored to be here tonight to celebrate our recipients for the Mayor's Awards, and I would like to start with Jesus. Come on up, Jesus. Almost didn't recognize him when he waved to me a little while ago, 'cause you got a haircut just a little while ago, didn't you? Totally, man, you look awesome. All right, so Jesus, first of all, I have to tell you, Jesus, you have been nominated for this award like three times. And I usually pick a fifth grader, 'cause I like to pick a fifth grader that's kinda outgoing, but Jesus is one of our third graders. He is one of our most respectful, humble, and intelligent young men, and he participates in our target program. And part of the reason he was nominated is because he goes above and beyond to do extra things to challenge himself. He is very smart. All the other kids wanna be his partner when they're doing something in class. Wouldn't you wanna be the most smartest kid in class's partner? Jesus asked for additional work, and he is just, he's just great in every way, every day. He's the best role model we could ask for. And Jesus, I got a little peek at your test scores today. They're pretty good. Guess what? You leveled up. You know what that means, right? Okay. This is our inside, the inside thing at Green Acres. So, Jesus here is a model for all students at Green Acres, and he models every day what we call Gatorade behavior. So, Jesus, congratulations. All right, if I could get Rachel, are you here, Rachel? I did not see, there you are, right there. Come on up, Rachel Burrows. So, Rachel has been a volunteer with us since September, correct? So, at the beginning of the year, we decided one of the things we wanted to do at Green Acres was provide classes for our parents to learn English. So, we had no idea what was going to happen when we put this out there to our parents, but we had 95 parents sign up for moms and dads to come take English on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So, we couldn't do that by ourselves. So, we started seeking out volunteers, and Rachel has been one of our most dedicated volunteers. She is always ready to assist our parents and striving to help them be confident learners, because it's challenging when you're learning a new language. She works extremely hard, she's kind, she's caring, she's enthusiastic, and she's just genuinely a great person. She believes in building strong relationships in our community, and she's doing that at Green Acres with our parents. We are just so lucky and blessed to have you working with our parents and thankful for you and all the volunteers every day. Congratulations. Ms. Hills, come on up. This is Teresa Hills. She is our media specialist at Green Acres. And Ms. Hills, come on over here. So, Ms. Hills, although she's the media specialist, she is so much more than a media specialist. She really does model that one team, one goal. She jumps in whenever we have an event, whether it's a media center event or whatever it is, and often we just come in and take over your media center, and she comes and helps us. She does the morning news for us, which is always fun and an adventure. And I just, I want to thank her tonight for taking our media center and starting to transform it, and this is gonna be a process, but we're transforming it into what's gonna be an amazing learning commons where our students get to enjoy STEM activities and all kinds of great technology. She already plans wonderful activities for them to get their hands on, iPads, and what are those cubes called? The merge cubes? And all the fun things that they want to put their hands on to learn. So, we're thankful for that, but most of all, we're thankful for your positive spirit, your willingness to always help, and we just love you, so congratulations. Yes, yes, sir.
Congratulations. Is that a Steve Harvey? You look like, I love Steve Harvey. Jahah Howard's here somewhere. Where's he at? There he is. He's our school board representative. I used to think, and he's doing a great job, I'll tell you that right now. I went to a meeting and sat at Campbell and watched him go around, and he got a lot of tough questions, but I told him to keep asking questions, so he's, he's doing a great job. Marilyn Blackburn, our, well, Tim Goode's our newest city council member. Marilyn came, how many months ago?
One year, four months, nine days, sit now.
Ain't that great that they know? International Academy of Smyrna, Katrina Brinker, is that right? Hello? Close? I should, I can't find my glasses. Sorry. Another imposter.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
I'd like the recipients for the International Academy of Smyrna to come up, please. And I'm Zinta Perkins. I'm filling in for Ms. Brinker. Ms. Brinker is the head of school. I work with operations, and we have a great group here with us tonight. Mayor Bacon, I wanna thank you and the council for your continued leadership for this worthwhile event. The four individuals being honored exhibit character traits that would be an asset for any school or organization. Our parent recipient is Claudia Terrablanca, who's at the end. Claudia volunteers in the mornings, where she is a dependable and consistent member of our carpool team. Even when the weather is not very cooperative, Claudia was always one to be counted upon to be there. Opening doors and greeting scholars and their parents is not always the easiest task, especially when you're holding an umbrella. Thank you, Claudia, for your diligence. Our staff and student honorees were a part of a singular event that requires preparation by all schools, but an event that no organization should have to face. Late in November, as the staff was getting ready for a parent meeting, our after-school teacher, Betty Jackson, collapsed in the multipurpose room while she was working with students. Staff member Talisha Stroud and our school nurse Gretchen Carr immediately jumped into action. They were decisive, clear-headed, and calm. Ms. Stroud and Nurse Carr worked in tandem to perform CPR using whatever tools were available to them. They worked tirelessly until the Smyrna paramedics and police officers arrived. Even after the arrival of the EMTs, they continued providing assistance. It was not because of their lack of skill or tenacity that Ms. Jackson did not recover. Their willpower, efforts, and determination was very evident and on full display. The next day, as we prepared to support grieving staff and students, one student stepped forward and demonstrated a calm composure and purposeful leadership. Rudy Jones gathered her classmates and provided words of comfort and care. She prayed for them and with them. Rudy was a source of strength for children who could barely comprehend the loss of a teacher. She was unbelievably courageous and caring. Students looked up to her for her guidance, and our staff admired her grace. It's important in this public setting for us to also recognize the Smyrna Police Department, EMTs, and neighboring schools, Griffin and Garrett. Community support was evident during this tragedy, and we were appreciative. When the spring opportunity came along for the Smyrna Awards, Ms. Brinker, the head of school, and myself did not have to deliberate. We knew that these ladies were all deserving of recognition because they embody the qualities that are so important for a school environment. Parent Claudia Terrablanca, dependable and consistent. Staff members Gretchen Carr and Talisha Stroud, decisive and determined. And student Rudy Jones, leadership and compassion. Join me in recognizing the honorees for the International Academy of Smyrna.
Rudy. Rudy, Rudy, Rudy. Gretchen. Talisha. We're hurrying. While we're waiting, her mother is a proud member of our Smyrna Police Department, Detective Alexander, so. Congratulations. King Springs Elementary, Dr. Cindy, another fill-in. I bet if Chris Ragsdale was here, we'd have everybody here. Hey, Tiffany, thank you.
Well, I am Tiffany Jones. I am one of the assistant principals at King Springs, and I am gonna start out with our student, Blue Patterson. Blue, come on down. Blue has attended King Springs since kindergarten. She loves King Springs 'cause she says everyone is supportive. Her favorite subject is social studies, and she loves to learn about her history and the history of others. In addition, she is actively involved in, she's been actively involved in the garden club for three years. Sorry, y'all. The yearbook club for one year and the Juno Beta Club for two semesters. Congratulations. Congratulations. And then our volunteers, Lyndi, Lindsay Firstal and Heidi Sandata. Sandate, I'm sorry. Both of these ladies have first grade students at King Springs. Lindsay volunteers weekly to assist the teachers as needed. She even reads to a small group during her weekly visits. When she sees a student is ill or experiencing any life challenges, she reaches out to the teacher to see how she can help. Ms. George said, "She has a heart to serve and love the people around her, and I feel so blessed that King Springs and my schools, my classroom specifically, gets to be one of those places that she pours out her heart." And next, Heidi, our other volunteer. She also consistently volunteers at King Springs, and Ms. Carter says she will help with anything we need. She always stays after events to help clean and get everything ready for the kids the next day. And these two ladies chaired the Party for the Pride, which was a huge event. It was sold out, and it was an awesome time to get our families together, and we were able to support the school and also bring the community together altogether. Thank you, ladies. And then our staff member is Ms. Carol Harrison. When we expanded to two campuses, we were lucky enough to be able to have Ms. Carol serve our primary students. She believes there is nothing a child cannot do as long as they are, they are provided the proper guidance and support. Carol has a kind word for everyone. She goes out of her way to lend a helping hand when she can. Carol will retire this year, and King Springs, the King Springs community will truly miss her. We hope that she comes back as often as she can to volunteer in our library learning commons. Congratulations.
Were you the young man yelling back there? Proud of it. There you go. Congratulations. NicaJack Elementary, Laura Meyer, is principal. How you doing?
Will the NicaJack recipients please come forward? I want to welcome everyone this evening. Again, my name is Laura Meyer. I'm the principal at NicaJack Elementary. We have got some awesome recipients here. Josie, you're going to come first, okay? So I want to introduce to you Josie Balcita. She is our student who is the recipient of the Mayor's Awards. She is a fifth grade student, and she is a wonderful example of a good student, a good girl, and a good girl from Smyrna. So she's a great example of our B3 expectations. What are those, Josie? Respectful, responsible, role model. She is all of those things. She excels in her academics, and then she also helps others. She's always there for her teacher, for her students, in every capacity to help them. She is involved in our school council, and, excuse me, our student council, and also in our chorus. So she's a very active student, and she has made many accomplishments this year, and we're so proud of her, and we're going to wish her well as she goes to middle school. And next, I'd like to honor Ms. Judy Kent. She is our volunteer. So Judy has taught actually in Cobb County for 28 years and at Campbell Middle School, and she just couldn't get enough, so she comes back every day to NicaJack. She is a wonderful lady, a smiling face every day. She helps the front office ladies with dismissal, folders, anything that needs to be done. She helps with a smile on her face. Both of her grandsons attend our school, and she in fact is room mom for the fifth grader, or grom. I've coined a new phrase for that. So she's the grom of her grandson's classroom, and we absolutely appreciate her every single day. Thank you, Ms. Kent. And finally, our staff recipient is Ms. Eleanor Negron. Eleanor is a clerk at NicaJack. She is here with her family, her husband, and her five children. So see, I mean, that right there was just a whole pew and, and a resounding cheer for her because she's such a lovely person. Eleanor is there day in and day out. All of her children went through NicaJack, so she's got a fifth grader now. Easy now, Eleanor. She's got a fifth grader. This is the last one that's gonna, that's gonna be going through NicaJack. And she, so she's actually been volunteering there since 2004, and so finally she decided, hey, I'm here all the time, why not go ahead and get a job? And so she did, and she's marvelous. And Eleanor always jokes about wearing so many hats because she serves this school in so many ways. She's a clerk, she's a parent, she's the co-president of the PTA. She does it all. She does wear a lot of hats, but tonight, Eleanor, you don't, you're not going to get a hat for this, you're going to get a crown. We love you all so much. Thank you.
Yeah, I want one more. I'm done. Congratulations to everybody. Zinta Perkins, did she leave? I, I didn't recognize you. I've known you since way back. I thought you were a student. That was a... Campbell High School, that's where, with Joe Bowden. That was a legend right there. Norton Park Elementary, Michelle Curry. How you doing?
Good evening, everyone. With Norton Park recipients, come up for me. Come on over, Gemma. I am the proud principal of Norton Park Elementary. We're going to recognize our student, and then we'll recognize our staff and our volunteer together because they serve one big purpose for Norton Park. Our student is Ms. Gemma Hawthorne. She is a fifth grader at Norton Park. She is headed for success. She is an example of great citizenship and a team player. Gemma manages to maintain exemplary academics while being consistent with her after-school commitments like to math club. Gemma also is a, was also a finalist in our geography bee. Gemma is constantly looking to help and encourage others, participates, participates all the time, and is a team player in the classroom and in the community. She is a leader among her peers and demonstrates dependability regularly. Gemma exemplifies responsibility, accountability, and always shows respects to adults and others. It is an honor to nominate her as the recipient for our Mayor's Award this year. All right, our last group for our teachers is Ms. Satchel and Ms. Chandler. They are two of our teachers at school, first grade and fourth grade. And then we also have for our community person is Ms., I was going to say Stewart, right, but it's wrong, James Ogborne. Both of them serve a big purpose for us at Norton Park. We all know that students have to be fed. They have to have food. And these two group of people, individuals, make sure that our food pantry is fully stocked. When the church comes, they come in a van, they come ready to stock our, our school. And our students, we pride that they don't go hungry because if they need something, they come to us. We have a bag and they fill their bags up so they'll have food. Our two teachers, they are responsible for Atlanta Community Food Bank. They run it for us at our school once a month for the entire community to actually come in, fill their bags with fresh food once a month. Our parents have been overjoyed with how much we're able to help them, not only with academics, but with also helping them stay fed every day. So I thank both of these groups for all that they do for Norton Park because we wouldn't have it without them. Thank you so much.
Picture. From the top while they're picturing. The next school is Russell Elementary. Tammy Watson's the principal. And just, you learn a lot of stuff when you come to this. Who would have thought in a prosperous community of Smyrna that we have a food bank at our school? That just shows you the needs that we have, so. Hey, how you doing? I love that green.
Oh, thank you. Assistant Principal, Michelle Gillum.
Another.
Another stand-in for the night. I am the assistant principal at Russell, Michelle Gillum, and I cannot wait to honor our honorees tonight. I'm going to start with our student. This is Camilla Messino. She is a fifth grade student at Russell. She's an honor roll student. She exhibits Russell's three Rs with respect, responsible, and role model behavior daily. She's involved in many extracurricular activities. She's the flight director for Russell's nationally-known space program, which I'm sure many of you guys have heard about. This week, she will lead a team of eight flight controllers on their 27-hour fidelity space mission simulation. Camilla is also a leader of our national championship radio team at Russell, the DX Road Runners. Her advanced-level radio operator skills are recognized by veteran operators around the world. Besides these two activities, Camilla plays piano, she loves reading, she speaks Spanish and English fluently, and we are honored to recognize her tonight, and we can't wait to see where her journey takes her when she leaves us from middle school. All right, and next we are going to recognize our staff. Nomination person is Peggy Gross. She serves at Russell as one of our clerks. Her service to the Russell staff and students goes back almost 30 years. She's been employed at Russell since 1990. It's a very long time. She not only works at Russell, but her children attended Russell in years past. As one of the first faces of Russell, she greets students and staff and parents with a smile every day. She's often the calm in the middle of all the busyness in the front office. She's the heart of the school. She always remembers to decorate when we have an upcoming holiday, even if it's a tiny holiday, she makes the office fun and friendly for when folks come in. She takes pride in all of her work. When you ask Peggy to do something, it's like when you go to Chick-fil-A and they say "my pleasure," that's Peggy for you. She always, "my pleasure." She just does everything with a smile, and she's happy to help whoever she can. As we recognize her with this honor, we are also saying goodbye to her in the next couple of weeks as she is retiring, but she gets to stay home and enjoy time with her new grandbaby, her first, and she's very excited about that, so. But thank you so much for all you've done. And our volunteer, I don't want to miss that she might be here and I just didn't see her, but it's Chris Childs. Chris, are you out there? Okay, so in the essence of time, I'm not going to talk about her, but she's a great volunteer for Russell.
Chick-fil-A lady. Thank y'all so much. Congratulations. Smyrna Elementary. The principal is Ms. Woo, woo, woo! Sharon and Bruno.
You're close, it's okay.
What is it?
Arduino.
I'll never forget that.
Okay, no worries.
Good evening, and thank you for hanging in there. We're at the end, but we have some fabulous people that we would like to recognize, and Smyrna, you have filled the crowds. So we would like Alathia to come on up. She is our student that we would like to recognize. So Alathia's teachers, and many of them are here, thank you so much, Smyrna. Alathia's teachers describe her as very determined, self-driven, hard-working young lady. She strives for excellence in everything that she does. Above all, though, she is kind-hearted. Alathia's classmates say she is very competitive, but in a good way. That's what they told me today. She wants to be good at math and reading, and so she pays attention in class and she practices her work. She likes coming to school every day. We are very, very proud of her. Congratulations. Toni Hutt. Toni Hutt is a staff member, the teacher that we are recognizing, and there are so many things we could say about Toni Hutt, so many of you in the audience probably know her. And Toni, staff members described you as encouraging, an extremely hard worker, an advocate for children, and a very creative teacher. Toni is our Teacher of the Year this year, and she is a dedicated and passionate teacher who is able to bring out the best in her students each and every day. You may also see Toni early in the morning, late at night, or on the weekends, in the garden, or all over the campus, making our campus beautiful. Thank you for doing that. Toni's students came to the office today to describe her, and this is what they said. She is nice, pretty, and fun. The students say she helps us have courage in class. Love that. And they said that they like problem-solving during number talks, woo, because Ms. Hutt lets us help each other. Congratulations. And our volunteer that we would like to recognize, Pam Henry, come on up. So many at Smyrna know Pam Henry, and we are so grateful to her for the many hours she volunteers. For the past many years, she has been involved in different roles at Smyrna Elementary, including supporting and coaching our Science Olympia team and working with our staff on a regular and weekly basis. Our staff wanted to recognize Pam for the many hours that she volunteers in their classrooms, for the delicious food that she makes, and for helping some of our families get to school when they cannot. Pam attends and supports evening events like International Night and our Black History Wax Museum. She shares her love and talent for cooking by catering our school functions. And I'm a foodie, so we're friends with that. I interviewed Pam's son this morning, Yusef, and Yusef said, "I recognize that my mom is involved at school, and she's always trying to find ways to make the school a better place for the students, staff, and parents." Pam, we're so proud of you, and you deserve this honor.
Smyrna group gets the rowdiest crowd. It's okay. I had a couple council members that have come in. Andrea Bleustein, who represents Ward Two, arrived, and so did Ron Fennell, who represents Ward Seven, so. Pardon me? Oh, yeah. Yeah, and another blue jacket. St. Benedict's Episcopal, Father Brian Sullivan, head of schools. This is one of the new schools.
I think it's appropriate that we're kind of last because we are one of the youngest schools, and when many of you say you can't do what you do without the people that were introduced, we have only been on the map for nine years. And so when you are leading a school and wondering, are we going to make it to 10? It's people like Katie Wasserman, if you'll come forward, who make this possible. Katie was first introduced to me after I met her dad, Larry Freeman, and her husband, Peter, when some of the first zoning signs went up. Because they own a home right across the street, they were wondering what we were up to. And it wasn't long until they enrolled their daughters in the school. Katie then helped serve on the annual fund, raised thousands of dollars. For those of you who rely on... For those of you who rely on what goes into a classroom, this is really the work of an annual fund. And then the real reason, because she represents hundreds of our parents. When you go from 60 students to almost 500 in this short period of time, it takes dedicated parents like this who can sort of sit on the front of the bough, take some of the spray through all the change. But what really sets her apart is this year, she stood up to do the one thing that every head of school needs, and that's a parent association president. And in the last six weeks, she has raised thousands of dollars for the gala, which is organizing a lot of parent volunteers. Then she came in and made sure in the last week that all of our teachers got a hot lunch as a teacher appreciation, and that's, again, a lot of volunteers. And then just Saturday, Last Action as Parent, look at that smile. Last Action as Parent Association President, she closed down May Day, which again raised thousands of dollars for the school. So thank you so much, Katie, for all the years and dedication that you and your family have given St. Benedict's. And many of you know, who have led schools, you can't do what you do without teachers. There are certain teachers that when the classroom door closes, that's when the curriculum begins. Mrs. Carr cannot be with us tonight, but she is our science middle school teacher, and she's that one kind of teacher when you are a bootstrap, affordable-tuition school like we are that makes do with anything that comes her way. She's the one teacher that doesn't come to you with problems, she comes with solutions. She's the one teacher that every student can't wait to have, and so I'm very honored that Mrs. Carr gets this award tonight, even though she can't be with us. And finally, none of us are here for any other reason than our students. The students in Smyrna are incredible, whether it's public, private, whatever they do. We know the kind of leadership they represent. Mailey's one of those students. We know that they are very good students. Mailey is one of those students. And what sets her apart is this year she did what really exemplifies what it means to be a student at St. Benedict's, and that's reach out to her community. Her father, when I say her last name, you may recognize, started an outreach for all the people who work in the food industry who can't afford good insurance, and so when they get sick, they have a fund. And the Kitchen, the Giving Kitchen is one of those funds, and this year, Mailey decided she was going to use some of the talent that her father provides most of Smyrna. Those of you who have been to Mus and Turner's, Ryan is her dad, and her family have been a big part of St. Benedict's. She came to us in preschool after our first year, so she was one of the first students at St. Benedict's. Left for a little bit, came back to fourth grade, will graduate with us next year, and she raised $1,500 through just serving and giving food and having people buy tickets. And she wanted to let you know that she's going to do a pizza dinner soon, $100 a person, so that $1,500 for the Giving Kitchen will go up. Her parents couldn't be here tonight because they're up in Chicago getting the James Beard Award for the incredible work they do here in Smyrna with Mus and Turner. So, Mailey, thank you.
Mus and Turner's, stop by and get 50% off. Anything you want. That's Father Brian Sullivan, just for reference. Larry Freeman's over here, proud father of Katie Wasserman. Last but not least, Teasley Elementary, Leslie Mansfield. And Leslie! Leslie, you had to wait, and Chris was not here, so I'll make a note to let you go first next time.
That would be amazing. Thanks, Mayor.
No, you are. I'm just kidding.
All right, Teasley peeps, come on up. I'm going to hold you to it, Mayor. No, it's so fun to hear about all the amazing people. And we have some great recipients here, and I'm going to start with the finest one. Sorry, no offense to you two, but you know, it is all about the children. So this, just come a little closer to me, come on. This is Clayton Clemmons, and Clayton has been at Teasley since he was in kindergarten. He has a twin brother named Porter, who is also equally amazing. And Clayton, I think the thing that I love the most about Clayton is at the beginning of his fourth grade year, I got a letter in the mail, and it was telling me all the reasons why I should tell the counselors to let him be a safety patrol. And basically, he said that he has the most enthusiasm for Teasley of probably anybody in the school, and I think it's true. And little does he know, he's not going on to middle school because I just don't think I can function without you. Clayton has been influential in starting our chess club, and they've had several tournaments and done a great job. He's done the geography team and was actually our winner of the Geography Bee and went on to compete in that, I don't know if it was nationally or what, but he's just an amazing kid. His teacher is here, and I think one of the things that I love the most about him is she says that he is truly an enquirer, and we are midway through our pursuit of becoming an international baccalaureate primary years program school, and he really is the definition of a kid who is curious and wants to just figure it all out and make his learning real. And his teacher said that he also causes her to have an enthusiasm for learning. So Clayton, we love you. We will miss you so much when you head on off to middle school, but thank you for the way that you have been a faithful cheerleader of Teasley and just for the amazing young man that you are. Next, I'm going to talk about Becky Gibson. Becky loves to be in the front of everybody and be talked about. It's her favorite thing. So Becky is our bookkeeper. I call her MacGyver, and if any of you are a little older like me, you remember MacGyver, and Becky can do just about anything. So she's our bookkeeper. She was just selected as our Classified Employee of the Year, which I think goes to show how much her colleagues love her. She is truly a team player. I mean, you say anything, and she makes it happen. So she's adored by our students, she's adored by our staff, she's adored by our parents, and we are just grateful for all that you do and for keeping me out of jail, which is the number one thing. I'm just kidding, I don't do anything unethical, so I promise, but Becky is amazing, and we appreciate you so much. And then Kate Hutto is here. Kate is one of our amazing moms and an incredible volunteer. She's the mom of Charlie, who is in second grade. She's also the mom of Harry, who is coming to Teasley next year in kindergarten, and her amazing husband Beau. We get the whole family when we get the Huttos. Kate has taken on being in charge of our business partner development and also fundraising. She really was the mastermind behind our fun run that raised over half of the funds to cover our turf field that we installed last year and also a sport court that we just installed this year. And she's just one of those people that when all of a sudden Kate was a part of our school, she just showed up and just continues to do thing after thing after thing to make Teasley the best it can be for our students, which is what it's all about. So Kate, we're so grateful for you and all that you do, and appreciate you so much.
Are you going to get a picture with?
Yes, all three. Come on, girls.
Clayton has great feet. His feet are about this big. That's good. I knew it. I'm up to eight and a half.
All right, look at his hair.
That's around eight and a half. Thank y'all, congratulations. That's the last one. We have a council meeting in 12 minutes, so if you'd like some misery in your life, stick around. But we do thank everybody, and congratulations to all the winners, and thank you for all you do for our school. Thank y'all.